All right. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome, everyone, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 Board Meeting. We're happy to have you join us and the variety of top, whoops, I'm sorry, camera, and the variety of topics that are on our agenda. Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin Moss, could you please do the honors for us?
Yes, thank you, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is now meeting this regular session, July 18th, 2023. Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Commissioner Tries?
Here.
Vice Chair Rogers?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community, whether here in person or virtual, to come speak to us on any topic for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us outside of our public hearing topics?
Yes, Madam Chair. We had one person sign up in the room, Steve Holgate. Steve, you want to come up? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. We'll look forward to seeing you then.
All right. Would any other members in the audience wish to provide testimony on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? That's the one. Okay, we'll move. We had two online, so our first is Diana Nunez. Diana, can you hear us?
I can. Can you now hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you so much. Good morning, County Chair Harrington and Commissioners, County Commissioners. My name is Diana Nunez, and I work for Health Justice Recovery Alliance, or HJRA. HJRA is a statewide advocacy organization that is ensuring Measure 110 is implemented the way voters intended to be. 2023 is the year that Measure 110 is getting on a firm footing. New data has shown a dramatic increase in the number of people receiving addiction services funded by Measure 110. Tens of millions of dollars are being diverted to services from the expensive, harmful, and ineffective criminal justice system. Lives are being saved, families are becoming more stable, and communities in every county in Oregon have new services that were not available before. Oregon is finally, finally starting to see progress in addressing the root causes of addiction, and in June, the state legislature passed House Bill 2513, the Hope and Recovery Act, and is now Oregon law. HB 2513 keeps our state's commitment to increase the availability of free local services for people struggling with substance abuse. It will do this through increased oversight and accountability, more timely distribution of funding, and redoubling the implementation of proven public health approaches to addiction services and treatment to make Measure 110 more effective, transparent, and accountable. Last month, the Oregon Health Authority released, and you can find this all on the, all of the information on their website, the second quarter report of the number of Oregonians across the state receiving services through Measure 110 instead of through the criminal justice system. The report showed that the number of people seeking substance use treatment through Measure 110 instead of through the criminal justice system increased by 44%. People in recovery who were provided housing services increased by more than 125%, and those provided employment services increased by 136%. Oregon's public health approach gives us a tool that no other state in the country has: getting to the root cause of addiction and ending the revolving jail door that keeps people trapped in addiction and despair. Excuse my parakeets. Every state and county is dealing with addiction crisis, and all major cities are suffering the tragedies of overdose, death, and homelessness. Addiction is not a crime, it is an illness, and it is time to treat us as such. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this critical issue in our community, and if you're interested in having HJRA attend a future meeting along with providers to present to the Board of Commissions, then we'd love to set that up. We would also invite you to a site visit.
Thank you, Diana.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
All right. Next, Madam Chair, we have Jenna Trust. Jenna, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jenna Trust. I've spoke here before. I just wanted to comment on time, place, and manner. I'm not sure what the current updates are or if they'll be spoken on today, but just again, wanting to say that several of the people in the neighborhood would like to suggest that that 500 feet be increased to 1,000 feet perimeter from the Aloha Safe Rest Village and the other rules around having that 500 feet be increased to 1,000 feet as well for camping. And then, you know, wanting to follow suit with other cities like Beaverton and Portland where they are doing the ban from having camping during the daytime instead of the five days. I think five days seems like a long, a lot longer time than a lot of these other cities have seen fit to do, and I don't understand why the county is not following suit with these other cities and the same rules that they're implementing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would any other member of the public viewing this meeting via Zoom like to provide comment on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? Give just a moment to your live raise hand function. Not seen any additional hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Our next item on the agenda is today's consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of 12 different items: two sets of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, one item from Health and Human Services, two items from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one from the District Attorney's Department, one from the Juvenile Department, one from Human Resources, and three from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission regarding today's consent agenda?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to proclamations, and I would like to invite our subject matter experts up to the table. With us today, we have Erin Calvert, the Assistant County Administrator. Her portfolio includes all things public safety and justice, as well as our incredible new directors for Community Corrections, Nate Gaoiran, and for Juvenile Services, Ray Cameron. Welcome to the three of you, and I know you're going to enlighten us further, but also take us through today's proclamation. Please, take it away.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is, as mentioned, for the record, is Erin Calvert. It's my pleasure today to join Juvenile Services Director Ray Cameron and Community Corrections Director Nate Gaoiran as we ask your Board to proclaim this week as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Supervision Week. Before I hand it over to Ray and Nate, I'd like to acknowledge the staff from both departments, many who are in the audience today. We also know that many couldn't join us as today as they operate in 24/7 facilities. They have days off that don't coincide with a traditional work week. They have some that may be in-home or school or office visits or court hearings or dealing with a crisis that they're responding to in this moment. All of those elements provide just a tiny glimpse into the work they do each and every day. We are grateful for the way they show up, their dedication to their clients, the community, their partners, and of course, to each other. Ray and Nate are each going to say a few words, and then we'll ask Chair Harrington to read the proclamation. And afterward, if okay with your Board, we'd like to invite you down off the dais for a picture with the staff, and I believe that Nate and Ray also have, want to provide the Commissioners with commemorative coins and certificates in appreciation of your support of all of their work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ray Cameron.
Thank you, Erin. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Sorry about that. All right, let's try this again. Good morning, Madam Chair, County Commissioners, and guests. I would like to take this wonderful opportunity to recognize our community correction and juvenile justice professionals and share some of the great work we are doing as a department. Our juvenile justice professionals provide a vital service and a key component of the criminal justice system. Since being employed by the Washington County Juvenile Services Department over three months ago, I personally witnessed the proclivity of our staff to provide the highest standard of professionalism within the department. Day in and day out, our juvenile professionals work with our clients to effectuate behavioral change and ensure public safety. For example, at Hawkins House, our staff works with our clients' behavior by facilitating CBT and a host of programs and activities where clients can express themselves. Our ACS team works diligently to divert cases from going to court and works with our victims and clients to provide restorative justice programs. Moreover, our community service unit works with our clients to pay off restitution to victims by connecting clients to organizations to perform community services and build career pathways for our clients. Also, to ensure public safety, our custody service team is responsible for transporting clients to and from detention and to and from court, and responsible for monitoring our electronic monitoring program and other placement options, specifically for our high-risk clients to protect the public. Next, we utilize a human-based approach for our clients. For instance, clients in our KTS programs are adjudicated in a specialty court, a more relaxed court setting, specifically for substance abuse clients, where the judge is more engaged with the client and our staff works with our clients using a strength-based approach, and clients are rewarded as they progress through the program. Our Regents team supervise our clients and the community where they come from instead of having them come into our office. In addition, the Region teams work with our schools to develop proactive strategies to prevent juvenile crime and to have our JCs co-locate at the schools to engage our clients. In sum, these are human-based approaches that will assist us in meeting the clients where they are and strategies that will involve the community in the design of programs. Apart from my general appreciation for community supervision professionals, I have a personal connection to community corrections. As some of you may know, I was justice-involved and was on probation as a teenager. However, it was that one probation officer who demonstrated the necessary compassion and effective engagement skills that allowed me to reflect and change my behavior. More importantly, that reflection and change in behavior led me on a career path where I had the opportunity to positively impact thousands of youth and families and prevented them from entering the criminal justice system. Ironically, I was also appointed Associate Commissioner to oversee that very same agency responsible for my probation when I was on probation, and also privileged to serve as the new Director of the Juvenile Services here in Washington County. Nonetheless, my appreciation for community supervision professionals and the impact they have on our community is a personal and deep connection. Finally, I would like to share some of the initiatives the department is embarking on this quarter. For this summer, our training team will be facilitating a series of intensive trainings in evidence-based practices such as motivational interviewing, cognitive behavioral therapy, which are client-based engagement tools that will allow our JCs to engage our clients more effectively, and cultivate behavioral change, and more importantly, reduce recidivism. Our research department is reconfiguring how we extract our data to identify areas of need. For example, we are now tracking where our referrals are coming from, rich regions, schools, and SRO referrals. Therefore, we'll be able to target our services accordingly. In addition, we are now tracking the most egregious crimes such as robbery, assault, and weapons, which we refer to as ROAR, to be able to focus and leverage resources for the highest risks and clients pose as a public safety risk. Our ROAR policy would add additional engagement for our clients with ROAR crimes, and it will allow management to facilitate case reviews so we may learn from the case. In short, whether it's our BTC team, our JCs working with our clients, support staff that assists the department with carrying out the department's functions, or our budget office that ensures we operate within budget, execute contracts, and that we are physically sound, the department works uniformly as one team supporting the department's mission. Therefore, the work our community supervision professionals provide to our clients as alternative to detention on behalf of the communities is essential to public safety. The positive impact they have on our clients and our community is demonstrable, and I am privileged to lead a team of dedicated professionals. My friend, Nate, I hand it over to you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ray. For the record, I'm Nate Gaoiran. I'm the Community Corrections Director here in Washington County. I'm also the new President for the Oregon Association of Community Corrections Directors. It is an absolute honor to be the representative of our industry here. Thank you for recognizing all of our practitioners in the field. We humbly and quietly walk in this justice system, and I just really want to express my appreciation for this proclamation for our practitioners. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for being here with us today. You have a very supportive board and a board that believes in our workforce and tries its best in our decision-making with our county administrator and general counsel to do the best for our workforce each and every day. I'm going to read today's proclamation. This is with regards to Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week for July 16 through 2020, 2022, in this year 2023. Whereas adult and juvenile community supervision is an essential part of the criminal justice system, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals uphold the law with dignity while recognizing the right of the public to be safeguarded from criminal activity, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals recognize the disparate impact the justice system has had on our Black and Indigenous people of color and those who have been historically marginalized and advocate for equitable and fair treatment for all, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are responsible for supervising adult and juvenile justice-involved individuals in the community, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for justice-involved individuals, and whereas community corrections and justice, juvenile justice professionals work in partnership with community agencies and groups, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals provide services, support, and protection for victims, and whereas community corrections and juvenile justice professionals advocate for community and restorative justice. And now, therefore be it resolved that on this 18th day of July 2023, the Washington County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 16 through the 22nd, 2023, as Community Corrections and Juvenile Justice Community Supervision Week, and encourage all community members to honor these community corrections professionals and to recognize their achievements. Commissioners, do we have a motion to adopt said proclamation?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The proclamation passes unanimously five to zero, and I want to open it up to my colleagues first to see if you have any comments that you would like to add.
Thank you, Chair. I have just a quick comment. Thank you for your proclamations. I want to express my support for this proclamation today. Providing alternatives to incarceration, offering support, promoting rehabilitation, and striving to address the underlying causes of crime is so important. This proclamation serves as a reminder that our job as Commissioners is also to make sure that our public safety system provides the right response at the right time. So, thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to doing more great work with you all.
I just want to say thank you to you and to the staff. You guys are just heroes to me, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate your dedication, your commitment to public service, and your commitment to the individuals who really need you. So, thank you. Thank you very much. And unless anyone has any other comments, I would ask you to join me, our Director's Management Leadership, and any other staff members related to community corrections and justice who would like to join us for a picture. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us. We know that across our workforce, people make a difference each and every day. When we're talking about community corrections and juvenile justice, we're talking about investing in our fellow community members so that they have the opportunity to thrive here in our Washington County, because as my parents taught me, you don't throw people away. So, alrighty, so we're going to move on to our public hearing section of our agenda. We have three of them today, and we're kicking off with one from Clean Water Services, and I thank Holly Dober for joining us today. We are going to hold a public hearing and then work to adopt a resolution approving the Clean Water Services nonrepresented and represented employee salary schedule for this current fiscal year. So, please, Ms. Dober, take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Rogers, and Commissioners. Thank you for having me today. My name is Holly Dober. I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management for Clean Water Services. First, I'd like to start by recognizing the employees at Clean Water Services. They are collaborative, innovative, and hard-working individuals who provide services to the community. I'd like to thank all of the employees for the work they do every day. The public hearing, the item before you, is to adopt a resolution
And also, because this is a Clean Water Services item, I want to make sure I draw attention to our marvelous Chief Executive Officer, CEO for Clean Water Services, Ms. Diane Taniguchi. And congratulations to you for being elected as the new Vice Chair of the National Association of Clean Water Agencies, also known as NACWA. So at this juncture, do we have a motion to adopt this resolution and order?
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Directors and Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to a Washington County item. This is related to transferring the jurisdiction of a portion of Northwest Groveland Road to the city of Hillsborough. Welcome, Mr. Stacy Shetler.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, members of the board. I think we have a map that's going to be shown here pretty soon, a PowerPoint. Excellent. So for the record, I'm Stacy Shetler, county engineer with Land Use and Transportation. And as the Chair mentioned, the matter before you is a transfer of jurisdiction of a portion of Groveland Road to the city of Hillsborough. After this short staff report, I'll request that your board hold a public hearing and then approve the transfer. So the section in the blue on the map there is the part that's proposed to be transferred to Hillsborough. The section of road is cut off to the connecting portion of Groveland Road because of the Sunset Highway there in between, and the roads in red on the map are roads that have already been transferred to the city of Hillsborough. The city of Hillsborough has formally requested this road transfer. The portion of the road considered for transfer is in the city limits, and it's not identified as being a county road in the future according to the county's transportation system plan. Staff has determined that this is in the public's interest to transfer the portion of road to Hillsborough. Proper notifications have been made in accordance with state law. There's no known opposition at this time, but at today's public hearing, your board may receive additional input to consider. So based on the information presented, I ask that your board conduct the public hearing and then approve the transfer. This concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the presentation or the action before us? Nope, seeing none. I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up for this public hearing in the room, but I'll give a last call for anyone in our audience if you'd like to provide public comment for this public hearing as presented by the LUT staff. Give you just a moment to raise your hand or come forward. Not seeing anyone in the room. Would any members viewing this meeting online via Zoom like to provide public comment in this public hearing? As you've heard this presentation today, give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and with that, I'd like to close today's public hearing. And ask if we have a motion to approve the resolution and order transferring the jurisdiction of this portion of Northwest Groveland Road to the city of Hillsborough as CR3340T/GJ.
Don't move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? Mr. Carr, could you please read this ordinance by title only?
Yes, Chair. Ordinance number 896, an ordinance adopting Chapter 8.54 of the Washington County Code regulating public property with respect to camps and camping.
Thank you. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our two staff subject matter experts and have them introduce themselves, please.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Commissioners, for the record, my name is Jess Larson. I am your Assistant Director in the Department of Housing Services overseeing our homeless services program.
For the record, I am Courtney Duke-Dreesen, Deputy County Counsel.
We have a brief presentation for you again today to, and my role is to help queue up the context for which you are considering Ordinance 896, and that context being our homeless services program delivery across the county and recent and significant expansion in that work. So to get started, as context, our system for addressing homelessness includes multiple strategies under kind of three general approaches for households and residents in need in Washington County. So we have approaches for folks who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. This would include our outreach workers who help connect people to shelter programs and such. Then we have programs focused on providing shelter for individuals or helping those who are homeless while in shelter programs. We have a variety of shelter programs that are expanding significantly, and in all of those shelter programs, we have services designed to help connect people to behavioral health, recovery programs, employment programs, and ultimately, housing. And then in our third lane of service delivery, we are also working to focus our services on providing housing stabilization to folks who are housed but are at risk of homelessness, and that risk can be because of rent and burden and the need for eviction prevention services, or it can be a risk of homelessness due to complicating medical and behavioral health needs such that they need ongoing supportive services like resident service providers or case managers to help ensure housing stability. So we provide services for folks in all of these states of housing instability with the ultimate goal to create a unified, connected system that works towards stable housing for everyone. Of course, we don't do this work alone. We do it in partnership with many community-based providers. Here's just a quick snapshot from our website, not the complete list of providers, but that sense of our broad network of providers who have varying different population and geographic expertise and work across multiple kinds of services to help us provide this integrated system of service to our community. This is a quick snapshot of this growth in action right now in Washington County. So I'm going to draw your attention first to the middle bar chart, which shows the change in shelter capacity every day of the year. In Washington County, we had less than 50 shelter beds that operated year-round in 2021, and just two short years later, we have more than 400 and growing. In our housing system, we had just about 700 and so, sorry, I'm not adding that up quickly, housing placements that we sustained year-over-year, and now we've more than doubled that capacity, and it continues to grow. So people have a place to move from shelter into housing. And this growth in capacity is demonstrated for the first time in our point-in-time count where we see a decrease in chronic homelessness happening in our community, and that is the slide on the far left showing the change in unsheltered homelessness specifically from 2021 to 2023. Of course, we are doing this with increased resources approved by our voters in the metro region, and this is a quick bar chart that shows you a snapshot of the change in our funding and resources to invest in these services from 2021 to our current budget-approved year, and that's both in the scale of that resource available and also the diversity of services we're able to provide to create that complete system of care. We're also excited to be working with some one-time funding carried over from the build-out of that supportive housing services measure. These resources will help us to make important infrastructure investments in our system, specifically in permanent shelter sites that are under development or pre-development, working towards breaking ground soon. And next, we'll be working on access centers, places where unsheltered people will be able to access services in the daytime and get connected to all of the services described previously. So going back to the slide and helping orient the conversation before you today, this ordinance 896 is a specific focus on how we in Washington County respond to the reality of folks living unsheltered in our community while we're working to connect them to the services that we have shared today. And then with that, I will pass it over to my colleague to continue the presentation.
Thank you, Jess. So my role for you here today is to talk you through the legal framework and the actual context or content of Ordinance 896, which we are asking you to consider for adoption today. So Ordinance 896 arose in response, in part, to some decisions that came out of the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit and a House bill that was adopted by the Oregon Legislature in 2021. So the first federal court case is a case well-known to your board at this time, at this point in this process, but it's known as Martin v. Boise, and that is the case that stands for the proposition that the Eighth Amendment of the United States Constitution, which prohibits cruel and unusual punishment, prohibits the criminalization of the unavoidable consequences of being unsheltered or homeless when the person doesn't have access to alternative shelter. The second, the second case out of the Ninth Circuit is a case called Johnson v. Grants Pass. And that case did a number of things, but for our context today, I want to highlight two things the Johnson Court said. The first was that they clarified that the sleeping in the context of Martin includes sleeping with rudimentary forms of protection against the elements. And what that means is that a regulation that regulates camping on public property can't say that someone sleeping outdoors can't have some forms of protections like sleeping bags or blankets against the elements because they live outdoors. The second thing the Johnson Court clarified was that the prohibition against the criminalization of homelessness applies to civil citations and penalties when those civil penalties are closely intertwined with criminal penalties or punishments. Finally, in 2021, the Oregon Legislature adopted House Bill 3115, which says that "any city or county that regulates sitting, lying, sleeping, living outdoors must be objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner with regard to the person experiencing homelessness." So with that legal context in mind, here's a quick snapshot of our development. On this Ordinance 896, we were first before the board in January 10th of this year to talk about best practices and ask your board for some feedback on broader policy questions. We came back on April 4th in work session to walk you through the actual contents of a proposed ordinance. After that presentation, your board directed staff to begin community feedback sessions, which happened between May and June, May 23rd and June 2nd of this year. We were here just a few weeks ago for our first reading and this presentation, and we are here today for the second reading and public hearing.
So a quick snapshot of that community engagement work we did to receive feedback from our community across the county, and we specifically focused on reaching residents in unincorporated Washington County, because that's where this ordinance will apply. So we had four, rather, three in-person sessions and also a virtual session, and during that period also had an online survey available to receive feedback from our community.
All right, so now to walk through the actual content of the ordinance before your board for consideration today. So as has been the case since April 4th, when we first walked through the ordinance with you, the ordinance is structured to say that when shelter or camping is prohibited on public property in unincorporated Washington County, when shelter is available to the person in the camp or camping. The ordinance then goes on to provide that when shelter is not available to the person in the camp or camping, that activity would be regulated by reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. So first, as to time, when shelter is not available, Ordinance 896 will regulate camps and camping on public property in unincorporated Washington County to a five-day calendar period. As your board is aware, we arrived at this five-day period for a number of reasons. The first being that in our experience over the last several years in managing encampments and individuals who are camping on public property, we found that it takes three to five days to reach and connect these individuals with the outreach workers and the services and programs that Jess spoke about at the beginning of the presentation. Notably and importantly, the five-day period is also developed in partnership and with full support of the Washington County Sheriff's Office as the proper balance of resources to enforce the time regulation. And then finally, we believe that the five-day period is reasonable. We have to always remember that this work is going to be judged by its objectful reasonableness, and there's already a basis in Oregon state law and in county adopted policy to give 72 hours or three days' notice before removal of an established encampment. So the five days is in line with that existing precedent. Next, when shelter is not available, Ordinance 896 will regulate the places where camping can or cannot occur. So first, I want to speak about the cannot-occur places. The ordinance does incorporate a number of places where camping would never be allowed even if there is no accessible shelter to the individual. These places include tax foreclosure properties within 500 feet of designated shelters, locations providing services to houseless individuals, schools, daycare facilities, and family care providers. And then also, on any property designated or operated by Clean Water Services or any agency of the state of Oregon as a riparian corridor, floodplain, drainage area, water-quality-sensitive area, vegetated corridor, sensitive habitat, or other significant natural resource area. As we discussed with you when we were here in June, we have also since our, and in direct response to our community feedback sessions, added another, one additional no-place, and that is a regulation that would prohibit camps within 500 feet of any camp or encampment that had been regulated under this ordinance, should it be adopted for reaching the five-day period, or removed under the Washington County Homeless Camp Removal Policy, or regulated under any other authority of Washington County. So we heard from the community quite a bit, questions about how far would a camp or camper have to move if it was regulated, and we didn't have a clear answer for that, so we added that expressly in the ordinance. So that would leave some permissive places where camping would be allowed, subject to the time and manner regulations, and those places would be the public right-of-way with some additional restrictions that I'll talk to you about in a minute, and then other public property that's open to the public in unincorporated Washington County that doesn't otherwise fall in one As your board is aware, we arrived at this five-day period for a number of reasons. The first being that in our experience over the last several years in managing encampments and individuals who are camping on public property, we found that it takes three to five days to reach and connect these individuals with the outreach workers and the services and programs that Jess spoke about at the beginning of the presentation. Notably and importantly, the five-day period is also developed in partnership and with full support of the Washington County Sheriff's Office as the proper balance of resources to enforce the time regulation. And then finally, we believe that the five-day period is reasonable. We have to always remember that this work is going to be judged by its objectful reasonableness, and there's already a basis in Oregon state law and in county adopted policy to give 72 hours or three days' notice before removal of an established encampment. So the five days is in line with that existing precedent. Next, when shelter is not available, ordinance 896 will regulate the places where camping can or cannot occur. So first, I want to speak about the cannot-occur places. The ordinance does incorporate a number of places where camping would never be allowed, even if there is no accessible shelter to the individual. These places include tax foreclosure properties, within 500 feet of designated shelters, locations providing services to houseless individuals, schools, daycare facilities, and family care providers. And then also, on any property designated or operated by Clean Water Services or any agency of the State of Oregon as a riparian corridor, floodplain, drainage area, water-quality-sensitive area, vegetated corridor, sensitive habitat, or other significant natural resource area. As we discussed with you when we were here in June, we have also since our, and in direct response to our community feedback sessions, added another, one additional no-place, and that is a regulation that would prohibit camps within 500 feet of any camp or encampment that had been regulated under this ordinance, should it be adopted for reaching the five-day period, or removed under the Washington County Homeless Camp Removal Policy, or regulated under any other authority of Washington County. So we heard from the community quite a bit, questions about how far would a camp or camper have to move if it was regulated, and we didn't have a clear answer for that, so we added that expressly in the ordinance. So that would leave some permissive places where camping would be allowed, subject to the time and manner regulations, and those places would be the public right-of-way with some additional restrictions that I'll talk to you about in a minute, and then other public property that's open to the public in unincorporated Washington County that doesn't otherwise fall in one of those no places. Before I move on to the manner regulations, I did want to take a moment to address some of the questions that we heard that were raised during our first presentation to you in June, and specifically why the ordinance incorporates a 500-foot regulation instead of a 1,000-foot or some greater foot regulation. Again, as we approach this work, we've had to balance trying to address or regulate encampments that may be near other properties that are designated for a specific use, and addressing the health and safety concerns that may arise by those uses happening next to each other with the legal framework that says we can't eliminate all property and the regulation must be reasonable. So as we started to look at what sort of regulations that might be, we landed on 500 feet as something that created a consistent and significant amount of space without eliminating too much public property from where permissive camping might occur if shelter isn't available. I also think it's notable that the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough, Forest Grove, and Tigard have all incorporated 500-foot regulations, so I think this creates some consistency and predictability in enforcement, not only for our unhoused community, but also our business and housed community. There was also some questions about whether the ordinance would prevent or impact the siting of shelter or shelter services. Nothing in the ordinance defines or impacts the siting of those types of services. Should those services be sited and encampment becomes, gets established, or a camper comes near a shelter or houseless service provider, then the ordinance might apply if we're talking about unincorporated Washington County. If we're in a jurisdiction, an incorporated city with their own ordinance, that city's ordinance would apply. And then finally, we heard some questions about why we hadn't included senior care centers or assisted facilities in the ordinance. Each of the designated uses where we've added the 500-foot regulation are defined uses of property that exist in the Washington County Community Development Code. We do not have defined uses for assisted care facilities or assisted living facilities. So again, in our efforts to make sure this ordinance is reasonable, that kind of use is not included for the proximity regulation, and at this time, the ordinance wouldn't affect encampments occurring in those locations specifically. Finally, our manner regulations. When shelter is not available, ordinance 896 will regulate how camping can occur in the permissive places for the allowed time period and in the allowed permissive places when shelter is not available. Again, these are things that are very familiar to your board at this time. They include things like allowing only essentials for living outdoors, limiting the size of an individual camping area to no larger than 144 square feet, and prohibiting actions that may cause health or safety risks, such as accumulation of waste, non-cooking use of fire, dumping of water that's used for cooking or bathing, digging or trenching, or any criminal activity are prohibited. As I mentioned, because the public right-of-way in unincorporated County, Washington County does remain a possible permissive place, we added additional manner regulations that would apply in addition to these things to the right-of-way. These are things like no obstruction of the travelway, sidewalk, bike path, or bike lane, no obstruction of access, be it emergency, non-emergency, or ADA, not allowing encampments in areas where there's no curb or physical barrier between the camp materials and the area intended for traffic, and then finally, no allowing or camping under bridges in viaducts or in culverts to protect that public infrastructure. So again, this brings us to the close of our presentation. We are here asking you to consider enactment of the ordinance 896.
Commissioners, do you have any questions on the staff presentation before we move to a public hearing? Nope, seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing and ask Clerk Moss if we have anyone who wishes to testify on this matter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not see anyone sign up in the room, but Madden, please come forward.
This was not in my plan to talk about this at all. Goodness.
Well, welcome. You'll have two minutes to present.
Only two minutes?
Mm-hmm. So you just give us your name, and then you can go ahead.
I had no intention of speaking. Thank you for the opportunity, but I'm Sandra Nelson.
Thank you.
And I have attended a couple of the community engagements, and maybe you had heard about them. My only concern is to speak up on behalf of ordinary people like me, who don't know much about the legalese and all of the major decisions and strategies that went into thinking about all of this. But what I saw when I went to these engagement meetings, and the reason I went was because I knew some people who were affected by it, and I saw a lot of angry people, and I was shocked by that and very disturbed, because what I felt was that we all care and want something good to be done for the homeless. That's just a non-negotiable for all of us, I think. But what we want to see, I think, is that there's a balance between their needs and the needs of the community. Because what I saw was so many angry people who were scared about what would happen in their community with what's happened in other communities, and I've witnessed that myself. I've seen the rats. I've seen the needles. I've seen angry neighbors and fighting among the homeless with each other and making a very unsafe environment for the community, for neighborhoods. And so I see these neighbors, then these ordinary people like me, just why can't, why weren't we told about this beforehand? Why wasn't there a public hearing letting us know that you were planning this? And so these people would say, well, we didn't know about this, and they were told, well, you didn't, this was made before you had the right to know. The decisions were made, and I guess my two minutes are up. I had no intention of speaking. I'm just here to observe. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Would any other members in the audience like to provide a comment on this public hearing on the time, place, and manner as the presentation you've heard from county staff? I've seen one. Would any members online like to provide public comment for up to two minutes of this public hearing as the presentation, as you've heard today? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I would like to close today's public hearing and ask commissioners if they have any comments to add and to see if we have a motion and a second to adopt today's ordinance.
Chair Hinton, I just have a quick comment to the staff that presented, Ms. Duke Drazen. I just wanted to, you and Jess Larson, to commend you all the work you put in, and more importantly, the time you took to answer those questions. I think I really appreciate it, and those are questions that constituents are asking and wanting answers, and I think you did that well today. I would like to, for a second, if I could, invite you back and just pick on your brain a little bit more. I think you did a really good job of articulating, especially the 500 feet, and how that, how we came to that. You also did a good job of articulating the five-day, but I want to, if we could go back and pick your brain quicker, just what, how do, like, you said it very well, but if you could go back one more time and explain it, the difference between us and the cities. And when I say us, I mean unincorporated areas of Washington County choosing the five-day rule versus cities, and just delineate that separation.
Thank you, Commissioner Fife, for the question. So we have been working in coordination and partnership and in close communication with the city partners in Washington County and special district providers in Washington County all along the way to try and get some sort of alignment and in how this work should be done. And then, and I think what you're getting at is one place we were not able to get in full alignment was, was on the time regulation. Many of our sister cities have done regulations that have a much shorter time period where camping would be permissively allowed, essentially during the overnight hours. However, our team, as we worked with the Sheriff's Office and our housing experts and our outreach experts, as well as the learned experiences we had during managing the encampment management program from 2020 to, it's still actually operating now, but you know, it was at its peak in 2020 and 21, was that it really takes three to five days to make connections with those individuals who may be camping or living on public property in our community, to have multiple conversations with those individuals, to tell them and inform them about the resources that might be available. And so that was one of the primary reasons we landed on five days. The second reason was, was that the Sheriff's Office, we had concerns about the resources it would take to enforce a camping regulation that required camps to be removed every morning. And so our Sheriff's Office, we didn't want to have a regulation that we couldn't actually enforce, and our Sheriff's Office thought the five days was the right balance of resources to enforcement. And they have good experience, Under Sheriff Cook is in the room, and they have good experience with making multiple connections with those who may be camping on our public property over that period and establishing those trust relationships. And then finally, where I come in is if this ordinance is challenged, we have to be able to defend that it's legally objectively reasonable. And because there's already a basis in Washington County policy and state law that says you must give an established encampment 72 hours' notice before you remove a camp, you know, we're doing 72 hours plus two extra days to meet all those other goals, but it helps aid in the determination that our regulation is reasonable.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I don't have any further comments, Chair Hinton. I'll leave it to you to the discussion about the work session this morning.
Any other commissioners? Do you have any questions or comments you'd like to raise? Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Sure, thank you. My comments were to the lady who testified earlier, and I don't see her, maybe she, oh, did she leave? Yeah.
Nope, she's there.
Oh, I see her back there. There you are, hidden. This is a very complex issue, as you're probably aware. We are dealing with several court cases. You saw those on the screen earlier. So for your neighbors, much like all of our neighbors, we all live here, too. They're wondering how all of this occurred. You saw what the history is. We now are trying to navigate that very complex set of rules and laws and regulations by applying some reasonable criteria. I think the staff has did their utmost to try to do that, which we've requested them to do. Is everybody going to be happy? No. Do we wish people were not camping on streets, sidewalks, parks? Absolutely. I happen to have been born and raised in Portland, Oregon, in this area, so I remember as it was, not as it is today, and I wish that we're different than it is, but that's not reality. What we're facing is today's reality. And so I'm supportive of what we're doing. I think it's the best we can do under the circumstances. Is it going to be the best for tomorrow and in the future? Probably not. With continued population of folks who are unhoused, we're going to have to apply more resources and more tools and look to see what we can do to continue to address these needs. And if we don't, then a lot more people will be very unhappy about people who are in their neighborhoods who are there without their pleasure, I guess. They're not very happy about it, but I can assure you, we've taken it very seriously and are doing all we can. So thank you to the staff for their work, and I'm supportive of the ordinance.
Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I just wanted to say too, Courtney, specifically, thank you for all the time that you've spent with me discussing my concerns about this, and I think you've done a great job getting us to this point, and I'm ready to put this into action and so we can move to the next level. And Jess, thank you very much for all the locations and the shelters that we do have available. You're doing a great job with that, and we'll continue to work hard on that.
Ms. Ortiz, any comments?
No. Just my appreciation.
Thank you. I would like to recognize the efforts that our agency staff have put in to help build community understanding about what it is we're doing. This is about our managing unauthorized camping, and also, it's about meeting updated requirements on government. And each of us in local government come to this topic of managing, my word, unauthorized camping. We come from different places because some of our city partners have allowed camping in certain cases as well. And so that has influenced how they have done the work to meet these updated requirements on government. Now, I'd like to speak to our solution set. As some of my colleagues have already noted, and our presentation illustrates in an exemplary fashion, we have increased shelter capacity here in Washington County significantly in very short order, thanks to voter-approved funding, but also thanks to resources from the state. And that includes resources provided through Governor Kotek's emergency order with regard to homelessness. As the presentation noted, $8 to $10 million are being put into action right here in Washington County to reduce the experience of homelessness here in Washington County. And this is yet again, another example of how your Washington County government can be trusted and held accountable to put public funding into action for positive community So we have this shelter space now, in most cases, and on most days. So that's where I really want to compliment the staff for laying this out to address all of these needs and requirements, not only today, but also through all the community engagement you have done. As even shared with us today, some community members have engaged to understand that this does not encourage or allow camping indiscriminately across our community. Rather, it helps address the requirements that are placed on us should shelter capacity not be available, and how do we go about doing so? We, I really want to also recognize the efforts of our team members across this one Washington County organization who have put into practice the experience gained over these last three years in managing unauthorized camping. Large camping groups that we refer to as encampments, as well as individuals and individual places, and also in working in partnership with, for example, our city police departments in handling all of that. Each and every time, you have done the work to engage with people, individuals, humans, in a dignified human capacity. And I can't thank you enough for that work, day in and day out, as you have done and will continue to do, both for Washington County employees, but also for all of our contracted employees. continue to do, both for Washington County employees, but also for all of our contracted outreach workers and service providers through all of our community-based organizations. So if I haven't said it in different ways clearly enough, I absolutely will be supporting today's ordinance. Thank you. And with that, commissioners, I would ask if we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 896.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, could you please take the roll call?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Treese?
Yay.
Commissioner Fai? Commissioner Willie?
Aye.
Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Chair Harrington?
Yes. The ordinance passes unanimously five to zero. And that's it for our public hearing items today. Next, we're moving on to our action items. Oh, and I neglected to call out during our public hearing that we had two written contributions to our public hearing. One, as sent to us from Michelle Gila, the Director of Realtor Advocacy at the Portland Metropolitan Association of Realtors, and the other from Ms. Barb Sosa.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and those will also be included in the minutes of the meeting record.
Thank you very much. Endeavored to do a better job of recognizing those consistently. So our first action item today comes from our Land Use and Transportation Department, and I would like to turn it over to our subject matter experts. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name is Erin Wardell. I am the Planning and Development Services Manager. With me is Teresa Terniak, Principal Planner for Community Planning. We also have our other two principal planners in the room, Diame Valentine and Stephen Shane, who manage Transportation and Development Review. We didn't all fit at the table, so Teresa and I will cover the presentation today. And we do have some slides. The purpose of our presentation today is to review our planning work program and talk over the community engagement activities we've conducted, share community feedback with the board, and then at the end of our presentation, we will be asking for you to approve the draft work program. Looks like we're working on bringing up our slides.
So Erin, you won't be able to click through this since it's a PDF, so we'll just have to scroll through it.
Okay. We'll do the next slide thing then. Okay. While we wait for the slides, I'll go ahead and start covering the material. So the work covered by our planning work program covers the work of our three different planning sections. We have community planning, which maintains our land use elements of our comprehensive plan documents; transportation planning, which maintains and updates the transportation planning elements of our comprehensive plan; and then development review, or current planning. They review development proposals to ensure that they meet our applicable county comprehensive plan and state requirements, so they're the implementers of our documents. We'll go ahead and move to page four, slide four. There we go. Oh, one back. So the purpose of the planning work program is to identify and prioritize the activities that our planning sections will carry out. These are based on board policy guidance and identified needs of our community. Our work program includes a number of mandatory tasks that we have to conduct as a planning department at a public jurisdiction within the state of Oregon. It also includes studies, special projects, and most of our projects eventually end up as ordinances, and so those are described in the work program as well. We attempt to balance our limited staff and financial resources with our priorities, our regulatory requirements, and input from our community. Next slide. And with that, we'll talk a little bit about the themes. So this year, we organized our work by themes. We thought this was a better way to communicate how our planning work aligns with the boards and counties' priorities, so we organized our work into four themes: housing, natural resources and climate; multimodal transportation system planning and funding; and then plan and code updates. Next slide. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and commissioners. Teresa Terniak, Principal Community Planner. So we went over this draft several months ago. We won't go into a lot of detail, but we wanted to provide you the overview with what's, what the work is that we do and what's in our work program. A lot of what we do is ongoing and non-discretionary. It's required by the state, regional government, or local policies. So everything that we do in current planning, the development review, our work at the counter, our work with code enforcement, is all in this category. In long-range planning, we work on things like plan amendments and annexations, the transportation modeling and GIS mapping, and then staffing a couple boards and commissions that we have, the Planning Commission and the WCCC. Another big part of the work that we do is at the regional level. We participate in planning efforts that cities do, for instance, for their proposed urban growth boundary expansion areas, a lot of the work that Metro does on things like the regional transportation plan. At the state level, we work on things like rulemaking that's done after state legislation is passed. So the projects may shift over time, but the level of work remains pretty constant. Next slide, please. Moving on to our tier-one tasks, housing is a big one this year, or this biennium. It's been at the forefront a lot of, at a lot of the local, regional, and state discussions. And so we've, we've got a couple tasks to increase housing production and affordability. Next week, we'll be asking for board approval to apply for a state grant funding to do a lot of this work. There is a pretty, a pretty large amount of state funding, so our assessment of our community development code to identify ways that we can streamline that and make development a little easier, reduce barriers, that'll be part of that grant. We're also looking at issue paper on rural housing options. The second theme is natural resources and climate change, which includes our work that we're doing right now on the county's significant natural resource regulations, updating our inventory and looking at making our regulations clear and objective. Where that work is well underway, and we'll be briefing the board in the fall on that. And finally, you've heard about the climate-friendly and equitable communities, rulemaking that happened. There's further rulemaking going on now, so what we have to do is still a little bit in flux, but there is a pretty substantial body of work there. Next slide, please. We have a number of tasks planned for transportation planning for all different modes, so automobiles, pedestrians, bikes, transit, and trucks. It includes scoping work for a major update of our transportation system plan, developing a corridor concept plan for a section of Farmington Road. We've been doing a lot of transit planning already, we'll be continuing with that, and implementation. And then trails planning and coordination, including the Council Creek Trail, Salmonberry, and Toowaltown Valley Trail. So there's a lot of work on the transportation side of things. And then next slide. Finally, on plan and code updates, we have several upcoming ordinances relating to some city UGB expansions that we then need to reflect in our plans. We'll do our, our usual omnibus minor comprehensive plan amendment. And then we have two issue papers, one dealing with contractor establishments and the other with a park system development charge. Next slide, please. We did do a six-week public review period. We sent out the, the work program staff report to a number of parties, met with the Planning Commission and the Committee for Community Involvement. And then this year was the first time we did an online open house. And so we, we received a number of comments from people, 22 in the form of letter and 28 were survey responses. We did note in, in both our staff report and on the online open house that staffing was, was limited, and we had a lot of tasks this go-around that were mandatory, so there wasn't a lot of room for change. And there were some concerns about that. So, next slide, please. But on the themes of the comments, a lot of the themes emerging were supportive of tasks that we had in our work program, on things like the housing supply and affordability work, our assessment of our community development code, rural housing options, significant natural resources work. There's a lot of support for doing that work. There was also support for having more staff to do it and more funding to do that and, and doing even more. Importance of meeting pedestrian and bicycle needs, so there were a number of individual comments about that. And rural tourism was also an interest. That one is remaining on tier two at this time. Next slide. So some of the themes, however, were on, on tasks that we, we aren't recommending that we're able to do right now. So we did, and I think the board has seen a lot of these comments, we did receive a number of comments about developing gas station siting regulations. We had recommended discontinuing the work on our short-term rental regulations. There were some comments and concerns about stopping doing that. A lot of concern, interest in doing an urban tree code, developing an annexation strategy, and then some interest in the North Bethany area with trying to get Shackelford Road continued from the Bethany community, North Bethany community over to 185th. And then a couple items that were outside of the scope of the work. These were items that we, we aren't recommending that we're able to do at this time, and there is a pretty good discussion in the staff report about the reasons for that, and we are, we're happy to go over any of that if the board has questions. If the board would want us to work on any of these, we would just need to look at what we would need to pull off of the work program in order to be able to do that. And I'll turn it back over to Erin to finish up.
We go the next slide. So at this time, given our limitations in staff and funding, staff are only recommending two minor changes to our draft work program. Both of those address recent legislative changes, one on the housing production and then possible UGB work related to Set-up L4 if a semiconductor facility is sited in Washington County. So with those two minor changes, staff recommend that the board adopt the work program.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation and all the work that you've done leading up to this point. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we move forward with approving said Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all your work. There is no question this is difficult with limited staff, and I, I understand that. I just want to make public comment here that I do think I've had ongoing concerns about our short-term rental issues, and we've expressed that over the past four years. So I just want to register that and the, and the gas station siting issue. I recognize that it's really at the state level, but I just want to put those things on record. I will be supporting this, however. So thank you for your work. I know it was difficult to come through and make decisions about where the energies, the available energy needs to be placed, and you did a great job there. Thank you.
Any other? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
Yeah, I, I want to follow up with what Commissioner Treese was saying. It is difficult, I realize that, to take a list of probably 300% and condense it down to 100% and tier it, but you do a great job of that, anticipating, of course, that over the next 12 months, things are going to happen. So we'll also be looking for some flex in there and, and have that conversation with what happens. But good job on this. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, so I'll, I'll do sweep here, and I do have a few things to say. First, shout-out to our staff from Washington County mayors. Shout-out for our Land Use Department, Land Use and Transportation Department for working on a timely and collaborative basis with city staff, including on land use planning projects for new or potential urban growth boundary expansions. Apparently, Clackamas County, as a county, is facing difficulties with planning the Stafford Urban Reserve area, and it's front and center for several of our area mayors, and so it, it has caused them pause to realize what an excellent job you're all doing. I just wanted to share for one of the items, expanding rural tourism, which is tier two. I understand that. But just a heads up to my colleagues, that's one area where I'll be speaking more on the need for us to talk about that as we move forward with our board's strategic planning and prioritization of work. Beyond that, to the specifics here, I just have one question and a couple of, one small question and a couple of other comments. On the, the planning work document, page three of 11, you do a really nice job of enumerating the, the staffing levels for this work. So on that page three of 11, it talks about community planning, transportation planning, current planning slash development review. I just want to make sure, the majority of our community plans, so under that community planning section, the third line, with community plans, are those entirely for the county, the urban unincorporated areas, or they're also, I need, just need the reminder, are there community plans for our rural areas?
The, the community plans are only for the urban area. The rural planning is all contained within the Rural Natural Resource Plan, so we do have the same maps in there, the land use maps, the significant natural resource maps, all of that, but it's all, all together in the one plan.
See that? Easy question. Just two small, small comments. Under transportation planning, you work really well with our transportation plans with right connection and smart as well. And since it wasn't listed, I just wanted to bring that to life. And then for current planning development review, this is, you talk about on the fourth line, unincorporated Washington County, and that term applies to both urban unincorporated areas as well as rural. So I'm just making the comment writ large that I'm really sensitive to how our general fund resources are being used to subsidize this kind of planning work in the urban unincorporated areas without having specific funding for that. So my colleagues know I'm sensitive to it, broken record, but just wanted to bring life to it nonetheless. So that's it from me. Once again, thank you for this great work. I have internalized that this is a biennium plan, which is a change for us, so trying that sweater on. It makes logical sense. Especially since there, there's this growing extent of requirements from state legislative action on the work that counties need to do. So thank you. All righty, with that, commissioners, I would ask for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 through 2025 planning work plan and authorized filing of ordinances for these tasks.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, colleagues. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to our second of three. These, I'm not sure if I'm correct in that they have some relation to the other, but we have an ordinance before us, 894, that first, we need a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Hello, Mr. Carr? Could you do us the honors, please?
Ordinance number 894, an ordinance adopting Chap-
Ordinance number 894, an ordinance adopting Chapter 2.38 of the Washington County Code, establishing procedures for management and use of the county lien docket.
Thank you. And I would like, oh, do we have a staff report usually with first?
We do not.
Okay.
We have people available in the ordinance to answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for today? Oh. And that's what I was looking for right now.
August 1st, commissioners.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of continuing this item to August 1st, please raise your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Onward we go, then, to the next ordinance, 895.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Mr. Carr.
Chair Harrington. Ordinance number 895, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code relating to instruments authorized for recording and amending the Washington County Code to reflect other minor changes.
Thank you. And I assume it's the same date certain of August 1st?
It is, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Do we have a motion to continue this item to August 1st?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. That brings us to the second public communication period of today's meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us?
Yes, we do. Steve Holgate, welcome back up here.
Thank you for joining us today, sir, in person.
Please go ahead for up to five minutes.
Pardon? Steve Holgate, I'm at 3980 Southwest 96th in unincorporated Washington County. Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you for letting me appear again before you. As before, I represent myself as a Washington County resident and am also representing the organization Climate Action. And again, I'm asking you to begin to take action on the grave risks to this community, its businesses and its residents, that climate change poses. As you know, climate change is already affecting the people of Washington County. People have died of the heat. It will get worse. The cost of inaction, though, will dwarf the cost of action. The county government and the commission will need to lead rallying people to this task. If we wait until there is a countrywide, a countywide surge of demand for action, it will likely be too late. If we wait until the bill comes due, we will not be able to pay it. I'm still hopeful. To meet the challenge of climate change, though, we will all need to step up our game, and quickly. Cities and school districts across the county are already taking action. The county government needs to demonstrate that it, too, understands the imperative to act. Over the last few weeks, I've spoken with a wide variety of business owners and chambers of commerce, as well as city officials and school administrators, about the grave risks that we face. An insurance agent tells me of the rapidly increasing number of claims related to extreme weather and the higher premiums that result. Vintners say it may soon be too hot to produce the world-famous Oregon Pinot Noirs. Others speak of increasing energy bills they face simply to keep their stores and restaurants, movie houses, cool enough to attract customers. You're aware of efforts by Clean Water Services based on their commitment to this scourge. A number of county offices, as we've seen, are also taking up the challenge. Presently, however, Washington County is the only county in the metro area without a climate action plan. Without a clear, comprehensive plan, the county's efforts will remain uncoordinated and insufficient. Without a plan, not only might the county miss out on generous federal assistance for staffing and implementation of a climate action plan, but it will put residents at further risk. I know of the commitment each of you has toward the county and its people, and I'm certain that this is not your intent. The budget crisis you've been grappling with over the last several months is daunting. Money for staffing and planning for this fight is short. I have suggested to some of you that it might be possible to gain private, regional, or state grants that could help match any federal matching requirements without additional draws on the county budget. Even if not, though, this needs to take a priority. The commission already has a draft resolution committing it to this battle for the prosperity and the health of county residents. It is time for the commission to take that first step toward meeting the challenge and pass this resolution. This will be a strong signal that the county is determined to take up its responsibilities. My colleagues with Climate Reality and I will be ready to lend any assistance we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holgate. I do want to correct one item in your testimony to us today. We have, in fact, taken a first step. It's in a different form. We have, instead of adopting a resolution that leaves open what actions we will be taking, we've actually put our money where our mouth is, and we have already taken the first step because we are working on climate action next steps with a public health approach, and we have resources here in our county already working on that. And if you leave your email address, I will be happy to follow up and send you said information.
I happily stand or sit corrected. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
Would any other members in the auditorium wish to provide comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Seeing anyone in the audience, would any members still viewing this meeting via Zoom like to provide public comment on any county-related topic for up to five minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. I would just like to move on, then, to board announcements, and I meant to highlight this in the first section of our meeting, but nonetheless, I'm doing it now. For everyone in our community, as well as my colleagues, to know, we have a new item in our packet. It is the Board Meeting Assistance for Community Members During the Meeting If Attending in Person Notification. It's a very easy how-to resources, resource, so in addition to our posted how-to testify, also in every single packet is this quick how-to so that folks have easier access to the services that we have in place to support them. Beyond that, I want to ensure that I highlight the public meeting notice for our July 19th, which is tomorrow, tours, both for the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services, as well as our community, at the Rock Creek Water Resource Recovery Facility. And then announcements for our future Board of Commissioners meetings. Next week, Tuesday, July 25th, we'll start with our afternoon work session at 2:00, then our board meeting in the evening. Then we're into the month of August already. Where has this year been going? Quickly, Tuesday, August 1st, work session at 9:00. Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00, and then our Board of Commissioner meeting will follow soon after that, maybe as early as 10:10. Thursday, August 3rd, is our monthly Commissioner Roundtable meeting, starting at 9:00, all-day meeting. It's going to be a very full day. Tuesday, August 8th, work session at 9:00. No business meeting that day per our standard practice. Tuesday, August 15th, work session at 9:00, board meeting at 10:00, and then our work session will continue from there. Tuesday, August 22nd, work session in the afternoon, and then an evening board meeting. Reminder that on Tuesday, August 8th, I will be attending remotely by Zoom. Vice Chair Rogers will be running that meeting, so I'll be a full participant. Then, just to make it clear for everyone, our fifth Tuesday of this month, August 9th, we do not have board meetings, so hopefully a lighter week for everyone. And I want to reinforce, everyone, board members, Washington County employees, Clean Water Services employees, please take your summer vacations, have your weekend fun. Summer is like nothing else, and we're doing great work between now and the end of summer, and we're going to be back at it after Labor Day as well. School will start up, we'll be back into the full throes of our incredibly busy lives. So that's it from me today. Colleagues, do you have anything else, board announcement-wise, that you would like to add?
I'd like to make an announcement about the County Fair.
Go for it.
Let's just remind people to take a look at the website for the County Fair. It starts this Friday.
BigFairFund.com.
Thank you.
Have a good time, and please come check out the 4H and FFA exhibits that are all listed on the calendar. It's great fun. Admission is free every single day of the 10-day fair. All righty, so seeing no other board announcements, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting for today.
So moved.
We have a motion and multiple seconds. All those in favor, please by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion is unanimous, five to zero, and we'll pick back up with our work session at 1:00 PM. Thank you.